Thank you so much, our dear listeners and viewers, who have just joined us at this particular time. It is that time again when we bring to you our Chazgo program, right here on Kanale 97.7 FM. It is a program that comes to you at 20 hours with different guests. It is a program that has hosted different kind of people discussing a number of issues affecting our province and Zambia at large. This evening, I'm your presenter, Bandar Edward, and my crew on camera, those of you who are watching us on Facebook, on YouTube, Stephen Comma is on camera. My producer is John Ziyawon Msateka. And today, it's a special one because we are broadcasting live from Chama district here in Eastern Province. And we are just from giving you the live broadcast of Kwenzia traditional ceremony. And we're still in the district talking to different leaders of this great district of Chama. Tonight, we are going to talk to Chazengena Council Chairperson Lokunokuboma la Chama, Adada Gift Kumwenda. Our wife Parirengi, Vindu Valekanarekan, Evo Vichitika Muboma la Chano. Mr. Gift Kumwenda is my guest tonight on Chazgo. Chair, good evening and welcome to this program.
Good evening, Edward. Good evening, viewers. Thank you very much for inviting me on this program.
Tom Pokedran, Pakanale 97.7 FM.
Now, I'm going to my demand.
Sure. So, our dear viewers and listeners, that's my guest tonight. And we're going to discuss a number of issues affecting Chama district, Eastern Province, as well as Zambia. We want to hear what Chama Town Council has achieved in the last three years this man has been in office. That's our topic. Chair, you've been on this position. The people of Chama gave you a mandate to run Chama Town Council. In 2021, it's now more than three years. What have you achieved? Or how do you describe the last three years you've been in this office?
Well, thank you very much, Edward. I would say my three years in office has been tough because when I was coming in, there were a number of issues that needed to be addressed. So when we came in, we found a lot of issues. First was the council itself, the management, which was not working okay. Which was not okay, I was not happy with the way they were doing things. So we started first sitting down with the team. And I brought in my vision, which the people of Chama gave him. I told them, the people of Chama, they want this, they want this, they want this. So if you want us to work together, me as your chair, need to follow my vision. I don't want thefty, I don't want any corruption. I don't want people to be complaining of us failing to do our duties. So I think so far, from there, we started our journey. Of course, there were a number of promises. We promised the Chama people. But so far, I think it's been a successful journey because a number of issues that we promised them has been achieved.
Okay. You won as Council Chairperson in Chama under the Patriotic Front ticket. And the moment you became Council Chairperson, your political party became an opposition political party. How have you tried, how have you managed to maneuver through delivering to the people of Chama despite you being belonging to an opposition political party?
I'll tell you one thing, Edward. As leaders, it's not written anywhere that you can only deliver when you work the ruling party. You know, I love when people start saying, "No, I want to work the ruling party to bring development." Then you're not a leader. A leader should be led to work for the people, either in opposition or in ruling party. Because once you are elected, or I mean, everyone in the district is looking up to you. They will not buy the excuse of saying, "I'm in opposition." "I'm not in opposition, I'm part of government." "I'm part of government because the people of Chama choose me to be their leader." "I'm now part of government, presenting the people of Chama." "So whatever issues that the people of Chama bring to my office, I must find a way of addressing it." "So as a leader, if you start giving an excuse of saying, 'I'm in opposition, I want to work with the government so that I can bring development,'" then you are a failed leader. Because there is no way it's written that you can only bring development to your people if you work with the ruling party. As so far, I've done a number of issues, a number of donations in the district, which was through my initiative. I'll give you an example. I've donated the defibrillator here in Chama at District Hospital. I've donated a number of machinery at District Hospital, which was
From my own pocket.
From my own sources, I arranged with my friends. So when you are a leader, you don't just look at government and say, "Ah, no, government is, I need this." You should find a way, if government is not helping you, find a way of addressing your issues, not only depending on government. So if I cannot give an excuse to say, "I've not worked well because I'm in opposition." So far, I think the people of Chama are there out there to judge me, how I've delivered. I'll tell you, I've donated a number of even delivery beds, I've donated even oxygen machines, ventilators, a number of machinery that I donated myself. So so far, I think it's not an excuse for me to be in opposition. I've done my part because I know my role as the council chair.
In your preamble, or when you are answering the first question, you said, "When you came, you sat the management down because things were not okay by the time you were joining Chama Town Council." What has changed from when you came in in terms of the behavior of the council, management and employees? What change have you seen for the past three years?
Well, thank you very much, Edward. I think one of the changes that so far I'm very happy about is, you know, an officer should have a work plan. So when I was coming in, a number of officers never used to make work plans for the week, for the month. So when I came in, I told my principal officer that you know what CS, for us to achieve whatever we want to achieve here, our officers need to have a work plan. One, they need to know in this week I need to achieve this, and this, and this. And every week, this work plan should be reviewed. What have they achieved? What have they not achieved? Why have they not achieved this? So if they're just working without a work plan, it's very difficult for us to know if we are heading in the right direction or not. So far, I think all our officers here, Chama Town Council, they have work plans. Every week, they are being reviewed by the council secretary. Why have you not achieved this? Last week, you failed to achieve this. This week, you failed to reach the target. Why? Where is the problem? So we find a way of addressing it. So currently, so far, even the council secretary that we have currently, I think is a very hard-working man. Is a man that has been insisting for a long time. So far, we're working very well. I've seen a lot of changes here in Chama. Yes, so far, I think we are in the right path. The people are there to judge us, the people of Chama. Because we can say we have done well when not. The people are there to judge us, sure.
Your district, your council is manning two constituencies. I think it is one of the councils that are overloaded in Eastern Province. We are talking of Chama South and Chama North constituencies. With the CDF that has been raised to about 30 million, that means your council is receiving 60 million plus every year. How are you managing the two constituencies as a council?
Well, like I mentioned earlier, that you know, it takes dedication to work. We are dedicated, all of us here at Chama Town Council, to our work. We want to make sure that our people should see the difference. You know, I was brought in for a reason, not to the people of Chama. So I must do what they blocked me here for. So I think so far, we are managing because we are equal to the task. We are delivering both constituents. You go to Chama North, you go to Chama South. I think we have done a lot of projects. And you know, today, I would say we have procured earth-moving machine. We have procured desks for pupils out there. We have procured mattresses for pupils as well as the health facilities. We are on top of things because we know why the people of Chama blocked us here. And we are working as a team. That's why it's easier for us. We don't work in silos. This one, no. This one, no. I think for us here at Chama Town Council, we are doing well in terms of teamwork. When I was coming in, Edward, it was very difficult to work as a team one. That's why a lot of issues were not achieved. So when I came in, I told everyone that, you know what? Many of the people of Chama have brought me here. They have given me what they want. So I want everyone to follow what the people of Chama want. So I'll not allow anyone to do their things. So we sat as a team under greed to say, "Okay, yes, Chair, you are elected by the people of Chama." And they gave us what should be worked on. So we started now working on those issues. One of the issues that we worked on as a team, you know, Chama doesn't have any industry. So when I was doing out during campaign, the people of Chama complained, "One chair, we don't have industries in Chama, we depend on farming." So why are these plots too expensive for us, the Chama people? So I told them, "I'm going to make sure that, since you've told me this, once you elect me in office, I'll make sure the price of plots reduce to a point where everyone can afford it." And when we came in, we started with management. I told them, "Look, the people of Chama can't afford their plot at 10,000 because they depend on farming." And when they do that farming, Chama is a GMA. You find that their plots are eaten up by animals. So most of, when the council would advertise plots, most of times, the outsiders, the one who are buying those plots, the people of Chama are not benefiting. So we sat down and reduced the prices of plots. So even a farmer from Pono can manage to buy a plot. A farmer from Chivale, a farmer from Murilo, a farmer from Kanalele, a farmer from Chifunda can afford a plot here in their own land. So we worked on that as a team. And so far, I can tell you that the people of Chama are benefiting very affordably plots in the district. We are actually, first is the first citizen of this district. We look at first the owners of the town. Then after that, we give those who come. So so far, I think the people of Chama out there, I can go on and talk to them, they will tell you to say, "We have benefited cheap plots." And even now, everyone is walking to the council, "We want plots, we want more plots." So we are working around the clock to make sure we advertise more plots so that our people can benefit.
Your district is dominated by the farming community. Most of the people are farmers, as we have just alluded to. That brings me to the next question of the road network. Because when a farmer produces rice in Pono, they are looking forward for buyers to go outside and buy rice. In short, they have to find market. But for those people moving rice from those far end to this place, to Londesi, Chama is one of the districts that have seen been cut off, especially during rainy season. You've acquired the earth-moving equipment using CDF. How are you prioritizing the grading of these roads for improving the road infrastructure in Chama?
Well, thank you very much for that. So far, I think we have presented those issues to CDF Committee as a local authority to say, "Look, we have procured this earth-moving equipment. Now we need to start working." We don't want this earth-moving equipment to be just white elephant, just for exposing, "No, we have machinery, we've procured machinery." No, we want this machinery to be working. So we are waiting for CDF Committee to allocate funds for fuel, then we start the works. Of course, Chama is facing a lot of challenges. So sometimes, CDF Committee may not allocate enough money. We have still engaged the government to come in and help us. We are CDF and government can come in just money for fuel. Then we can do the works ourselves as a local authority.
Have you graded any software?
So far, we have started with the works, but we started late. And I personally, as council chair, I'm not happy with the quality of works that we are doing so far because I think the operators, we are not well qualified. So we need to change those men or we've engaged other people that can help them to teach them on how they work properly. Otherwise, we have started doing the works. Last day, you were in Siti Chifukambombo's area, going to the arena for the selemon. You saw the graded load, that is the grader that we are working. Yes, but so far, these graders, I think the people of Chama have been looking for this. This brings me to your earlier question. You know, when we were coming in, there was an issue of saying, "People, the council are thieves." "Ndramuana, nana ba last time, my grader, nana shita approved, my CDF committee to bring my grader back to Chama, but my council, nana ba kawala, nana ba ndramuana grader." There was no, the MP was not mentioned. It was the council, which was saying, "My council, nana ba kawala, nana ba ndramuana grader, my council, nana ba kawala, nana ba ndramuana grader." But today is very funny, Edward. The council has managed to procure the graders. The funny part is that today, I must walk out. I've delivered. I've delivered to the people of Chama. If those graders were not there, are you telling me the MP was going to be blamed? It's me as a council because the council are the one who are implementing those CDF resolutions. So if we fail, then you will not be mentioned. It will be the council has failed to buy grader, the council chair is a failure. But I told my team, we need to deliver to our people. We managed to procure those graders. And I shouldn't be plowed as a council chair to say, "I've managed to do these things and the government here, you can check them, we've bought quality." The people of Chama are getting the quality of them, I mean, the quality works. They're getting the value for their money and we are doing the best. So as council, I think we are on top of things. We have managed to procure those earth-moving machinery and those aquatic machines. So I'll continue as their council chair to make sure I do the best for them. And our wish is, before I leave office, that all the roads are worked on, especially the key roads from here to Chifunda, here going to Chivale, Lundo, Kanalele. These works should be at least done on every year basis. This year, immediate rains stopped, we work on, we improve those bad spots. So every year, every year, you find that in five years from now, the road will not be bad as it is now.
Water, many of the times you've heard, "A woman has been attacked by crocodile while they were fishing water in a stream." Chama is on record to be one of the districts grappling with water challenges. How, as a town council, how have you managed to work towards providing clean drinking water for the people of Chama?
I think so far, issues of water, I think was, it was one of the big issues when I was coming in office. So we sat down and presented these issues to the CDF Committee. And here, at the CBD here, I tell you, people were cleaning up water from the DEX office. Here at the council, they could come, start fishing water here. But today, it's a different story. We managed to drill bohos around Makendhi and that water issue is no longer there. Not only that, we have areas like Karingo, Gaozi, we have done a number of bohos. But we are still doing, even right now. The machines are there, we are still drilling bohos. We want to see, we don't want to continue seeing our people dying because of fishing water. We want to see a different story. Tokumba, to oneenganyitwa, banditwa, fengi, pampafupino, vata, pumtakotapamaji, baw, ngwena yakola yakoma, awumpatakotapamaji, chikoko chavakoma. Uh-uh, we want them to be fishing water near their places. So so far, we have done a number of bohos in Chama South and in Chama North. And also thanks to our vision. Our vision came through the district. They are helping us with water in two chiefs down, Chief Chikwa and Chief Chifunda. So that side, we have water irrigation system. And the people there, they have no issues of water now. Yeah, so far, I think our vision has helped us a lot in that line because water in Chikwa, Chifunda, that's why we have a lot of animals. So people are dying every week from top divers.
Chama, the entire Chama district, you said it that it's the GMA. The entire district is a GMA. That means we have a lot of animals and there are people residing in the same district. You want animal conflict. How rapid is it? And how, you as a leader, how are you managing to collaborate with authorities to make sure that people's lives are safe in Chama?
Well, I'll tell you that it's a sad story. Almost every week, we are buying our relatives in Chama from animal-human conflicts. Tomorrow, buffalo has killed someone in Chikwa. The other day, elephant has killed someone in Chifunda. The other day, it's week three. It's sad that Chama is, we are losing our people from animals. I think this issue can be avoided. It can be avoided if the department is serious, working tirelessly.
What do you think is a problem? Is it that the people have failed to coexist with the animals? Or the people managing this wildlife are not doing their job? What really is the problem?
I think the number of animals have increased. First, you know, previously, we had very few animals. It was only in Chifunda and Chikwa. But this time, Temwe, Cambombo, Lundo, Kanalele, even Chivale, we have animals everywhere. So I think the number of animals have increased. It's a core, I think even the manpower for the officers from National Parks and Wildlife, they are few. So we are calling on the government that they can increase the manpower in the district. It's a sad situation, my brother. You agree with me, I mean, I was brought in by the people to represent them in this town. So when I see my people are dying, it pains me. Chubiniyachomene, because in Kalabana chufa chavant. So van tukunu pa Chama, pa kufua, my brother. And we are calling on government that I think for Chama to develop, we are asking that this district, part of this district, should be digested because everywhere is game management. All of these districts is game management. If one mining activity needs to take place here, everything we can do, everything we can do, everything, then we will reach at the point where they will say, "Go and get authority from Department of National Parks and Wildlife." And there, they also have their own excuse of giving, "No, there are a lot of animals there, the animals will be disturbed." So we lost an investor, Kuma Investment, who was supposed to put up an investment in Murilo. And he was not given authority from Department of National Parks and Wildlife. They said, "This is a GMA." So we are asking the government that, I think the people of Chama deserve better. This was declared a GMA in colonial government. Up to now, it's still a GMA.
Even where we are?
Even where we are, it's a GMA. The time they were declaring a GMA, they were 13,000 people. But now, we have 100, 200,000 in the district. It's still a GMA. Previously, there were a lot of animals. Right now, I think we are minimal animals. So we are asking the government that, we are calling on government to, part of this district should be open for development. So at least, we can see change. Instead of asking for permission from Department of National Parks, it can be, once we do, they go to Minister of Land, Minister of Mine. You know, we have a lot of minerals in the district. A lot of investors have been coming in, seriously wanting to invest. Yesterday, you saw that company that wants to deal with mining activities in the district. But we are waiting, we'll see what will happen. Maybe they will be stopped because it's a GMA. So we are asking, we are calling on government that at least part of the district should be digested. Should be opening space for development. Yes.
How are your people benefiting? We've seen a number of organizations have come in on board to help the Department of National Parks and Wildlife in the conservation of these animals. How are the people of Chama benefiting from conserving the wildlife?
Well, it's a tough thing to say. You know, the people of Chama are not benefiting much from rare animals because they are saying, "These are rare animals." But they're not benefiting a lot. There are very few activities that are happening out there. Of course, these organizations that have come on board, at least now, there's just a bit, maybe 10%, I would say, that has improved. We are able to see some other activities coming on board. But the problem that comes is, even these organizations that are coming in the district, they pay more interest on animals than the people. They are not interested in the people. They are interested in the animals. So our people are left vulnerable. Even the act right now, the game management, I mean, the act, it protects the animals and the people. So as it is, if today, someone has killed an elephant, you see how vehicles will be flying, rushing to make sure they pick those people who have killed the elephant. But if buffalo has killed a human being, it takes hours. They will say, "We don't have resources. We don't have where to get fuel." According to them, the operations is just for making sure we protect animals. So we want to see change in that line. We want to see our people should be protected. We are here today, voted by the people. So we want our people to be protected. We can't be just protecting animals. Animals, animals, no. So that is our plea. I think our people are not benefiting much in terms of animals. We want to see change. Let the people benefit, this is their animals. Yes.
We heard the minister, the provincial minister, during the Kwenzia traditional ceremony, he mentioned that the government is working on repealing the World Life Act so that when an animal attacks a human being, the family or that person should be able to be compensated by the government. How did you receive this particular news? Do you think it can be done? Or it can bring any change to your people?
I believe if government can do that, that is actually the best thing that government can do. Me, I'll be very happy with the council chair because where I am, our people are dying every day. And when their families have gotten nothing, and you find that the same man that has died is always helping the family. And the families, they keep walking to our offices, asking for help.
It started giving out relief food. Yeah, they give the first round, so we are waiting for the next round. But I think I've seen a number of people coming to my office asking for this works, so that they can just buy a medal of merit. So far, what we are, I think, what we are expecting is to see more relief food coming in the district. And there are areas like Chief One, if you train heavily, you can't take mains that side. So this is the time now for us to take foods in those areas where we need to start learning. They are inaccessible. So we were, we, we, yes, with this, I told you, but commissioner now, there's push that food should be taken in these areas now. But once it starts learning, our people will not be getting food. So we hope to see more from government, like in other districts in the country. So Chama, we had, of course, rice was there. We want, we, we produce actually the best rice in the world, Chama rice. So far, eh, rice was there, but a number, elephants came in, people were trying. You go there, you feel bad for them. You can imagine they've spent five, four months, five months farming to come out with nothing. The elephant have eaten, the food. Chubinya, chubinya, chumene, wa lima, kono zoko, zose, zapatamwa. So we feel for our people, but we expect good things from this government.
Your council has also been tasked by the responsibility of overseeing the cash for work. How is it going in Chama? Is it benefiting the intended beneficiaries or it's going in the pockets of people? How are you ensuring that this cash for work money goes to intended beneficiaries?
Well, so far, I think we've started going around. My brother, always there are people who want to put things in their pockets. Even at the beginning of this problem, there are people who wanted only me, my sister, my brother, adumbuane, akurubane, adoko, asweni, ndio ba shite benefit because tufma kumbali i. But we don't want that. This is not for time, this is not time for politics. All of us, we are Chama people, we are Zambians. So we'll not allow that eh, others should not, should be reminded that no, imbo ti muka tufma kushpancha and han. Munga, moga stako benefit i vi ah, we don't want that. So we are going around to me, the district, the council secretary, checking, and we hold meetings. Hear from people, what is the problem? No, apa wale ba balele opela, wale napisa tika and han, and then we sit them down and tell them, ah, i bi ai. Nyango yoye na fikere, nyango yoye na zanfikere. We, in Zambia, we have democracy. Munda liosso fwa, uko kumba opita, ngamfo, ngamfo singa. But when government is formed, the government is for the people, and not for a political party. Yes.
We, I will now ask you some personal questions. As a, as, as council chairperson, you've served for more than three years now on that throne. Eh, you won under the Petrotic Front, as I said, area.
Yeah.
Eh, the party became an opposition political party. We've seen most of your leaders switching camps, trying to align yourself with the ruling party. Because the ticket, the party on whose ticket you stood for is no longer attractive. Are you one of those who are trying to ditch your, your political party? Because it's no longer in, in government?
Well, thank you, Mr. Edward. First, I want to correct you. The Petrotic Front is very attractive, very attractive. Yes. Eh, I'm not ditching my political party. I was, I'm knowing today, eh, the whole district, Chama, they know me, Gift Council Chair, Gift Council Chair, because of the PF and Eddie Galongo. Eddie Galongo signed on my adoption certificate, sponsored me to be here. It's because of PF and Eddie Galongo. I can't insult them. I can't. Those are my fathers. They've made me who I am. Even if I'm to make a decision of leaving the Petrotic Front, I'll live in peace, my brother, and not insulting my father. Then I'm not a good leader. I'm a leader. You journalists, I'm challenging you. Ask us, ask leaders who are telling you to say, I want to, I want to work with the government of the day, so that I bring development. Ask us, where is it written that you can only bring development to your people? When you work with the ruling party? Where is it written? We saw Jufuma Band, working in opposition for how many years in Chazev? Many times. So for me, I won. Where I was brought from, I was taught manners. I was taught, even if, even if my mother today, you know, I was, I was brought in by mother, my father. Then my, 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 on the process, I finished school, they took me to school, I finished school, in the process, my, 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 my father becomes lame. He says, does it mean he will no longer be my father? It still means my father. I can't insult him because today he's lame. I'll start telling him, no, shi ngangala shida di, jenchi le maichi. After abukuzie, na, mano osuzie, and same same na na politics. Usabota mungu ju susia. Some of us, we had nothing. We were made to be where we are because of this political party, Eddie Galongo. Of course, I work with the government of today. I'll work with them to bring development to. But I cannot insult my political party. If I insult, ask me, am I a leader to save the people of Chama? Or my interest is my pocket and my family? Because if I want to save the people of Chama, even in opposition, I can still them, save them. I'm saving them right now. I'm respecting the government of today, but I respect also my parents, my political party. So I'm not going to lie to you and start telling you, no, eh, you know what, it's useless, no. No, that one, no, I, I deserve those. Those are my parents. If I'm to make a decision of joining the ruling party, I should live in peace and I should not insult where I'm coming from. I can't do that, my brother. For me, ask.
Are you, are you, are you intending to leave at some point?
I have no, for, for now, I think I can't tell you that. But one thing I'll tell you, even if I leave, I'll still respect my parents. Dr. Eddie Gachabalon made me to be Gift Kumwenda in Chama district. Today, I'm not even with young children. Gift Kumwenda, Gift Kumwenda, because of Eddie Galongo supported me. He signed on my adoption certificate. We, we politicians, we should try to be grateful sometimes. We should try to be grateful. Even if we, we have, he has left the power, he made me who I am. He introduced me to politics. It's tough, my brother, but I feel, even if, unless, unless some of those people maybe, they've have my issues. So they don't want to be followed, trying to make sure I insult this one, but it's not a good thing. It's not a good thing. Today, ask those people who signed on their adoption certificate, Eddie Galongo. On which she parted PF. So of course, I'm, I work with the UPND government today because it's a party which is in government. I would respect the president, I would respect the government, and I'll never insult my father, who made me where, who I am today. I'll never. Whether privately, media, my brother, for me, I have principles. Because ask me, I insult those today. I go to the ruling party. The ruling party, if surely they are, I know, they are good people, they are big politicians. They will tell me, this young boy is useless. He left the people who made him to be where he is today. He's insulting them. If, the way he is insulting those people, if we leave power, he will insult us the same way he's insulting his party. So a good politician will say, ah, oy ni krope, nigayo, tente muzi. Kone panyango ya kwan, oni nesho za mwa. Kulidi, mta giri, wa binge, wanganiosa, agia zivak. Kulidi. Those are our parents. To my colleagues out there, my fellow politicians. Tente kumbuke, out of me, let's remember where we're coming from, who made us to be where we are. We are here today because of somebody supported us. Somebody signed on our adoption certificate. I was not alone, who have five aspiring candidates on the Petrotic Front. But they chose me. And the six presidential president, Dr. Eddie Gachabalon, signed on my adoption certificate. Some of, some of those you, you mentioned, to say there are some who want to ditch. Ask them, how many were there? Some will find they were ten, but they chose one man. You can't be grateful for once. People supported you. If my brother, ichikavuta, I would rather stop a bit and not insulting where I'm coming from. I can't do that. For me, I respect, even if I'm to make a decision to say, okay, ah, those are personal decisions, of course, if I'm to make, I want to live. If I'm to, I'm to live today and join the other political party, socialist or any other political party, I'll not insult where I'm coming from. I'll respect them. Because even where I'm going, they will come me to say, ana mama nasu muana, kweni ana choka, kulidi wena shita complain, kuti ana ba shita insult. Even kweni yenda, wazanitanda di la bwe, no kuti, ah, kumwenda, ni muana wa ure. Orona ise tikasebeza naye, tikachaoka, saza kanyosa ise apa. Asaka ti pasa ure. And I believe that's what we, we, we expect in Zambia, in Africa. We can't be insulting leaders that helped us to be where we are. Tell me, Edward, among us, all of us who won on PF, if Eddie Galongo said no, the PF said no, are you telling me we are going to be, I was going to be the council chair? Are you telling me people out there, those who want, who are going to be on those positions, the answer is no? Let's be grateful. For me, I think I'm very grateful to, for supporting me, my political party, and the Dr. Eddie Gachabalon. Much love for him. He made me who I am. I won when I was twenty-six years as council chair, the youngest in Zambia. It's not easy, my brother. It's not easy. I must respect my father. He's my father. Like I respect any other leader in the district. So for me, I have much respect for them. I would never show my ignorance. Useless part of me in the public starting insulting my father, no? For me, I respect them. I love them. They made me who I am. Even if I was young, I was given a chance to say, even if he's a youth, let's give youth an opportunity. So Edward, eh, I've taken much time, but I want to, I wanted to just express myself. For me, I have much respect for them. I'm not going to make a decision of insulting my, my parents. Those are my parents. PF will always be part of me, even if I live ten, fifteen years from now, I can be in ten political parties, but PF will always be part of me because they've introduced me to politics. Without PF, I would not be part of politics today. You are not even going to come here and interview me. But you're coming here to say, want to interview the council chair because of the PF and Dr. Eddie Gachabalon. I think for me, that's what I can say.
Eh, you became the council chairperson at twenty-six. Do you have any intentions of elevating yourself to a bigger position than the council chairmanship that you were given by the people of Chama anytime soon?
Well, eh, first thing, Edward, I want to tell you is eh, it's not me to elevate myself. First, it's not me to elevate myself. Everyone has an ambition. All of Panchito, Komangaandwe, Klin, but wishing of long hard boss. But if you have the qualification, you can get somewhere. So here in politics, the qualification is, council was at the judging at twenty-six. All you are saying is a bunch. All of the people have been coming to my office, telling me, Chair, I want you to be here, I want you to maintain, I want you, but by the end of the day, the people will choose. If they want me to be here, I will remain here as council chair. If they want me to be the running mate, I'll go. It's the people who say so. But sometimes, we need to be clear also in making these decisions. Need to weigh yourself. How have you, how have, how have I worked well with my people? It's a big task for me to choose and say, I want to do this. But if the people feel so, I'm very much available, without fearing anything. I can do anything. I've managed to do, to learn two concerns as a council chair. Anything they can give me now, I can do. Now president in Kalpanis.
You are, eh, I, I think you have very high ambitions. I like that. You are coordinating councillors from two constituencies. Your council, I think, it's one of those with more councillors. How are you working with your councillors as a council chairperson?
Well, eh, so far, I think my council is the only council in Eastern Province that has the highest number.
How many?
We have twenty-four councillors.
Twenty-four?
Yeah. Eh, and all of us, we are youth if including the council chair, and all the councillors are youth. So, so far, so good. I'm working with all my councillors. Of course, at first, we had challenges. Currently, we have five ruling party councillors. But if I'm with them, you will not even notice to say, I have, this, they are from different areas. For me, the first thing that I put, I told my councillors is eh, one, let's put our people first. Let's bring development to our people. Our political affiliation aside, let's look before development, all of us, regardless of where you're coming from. We are one as, as a terror authority here. There's only one council, Chama Town Council. So we are one. I will know, and it's been from the way they go. If they are, they come here, you will not even notice the way they laugh. They, there is good coordination. Of course, at first, it was difficult explaining to them. But then they started understanding, say, ah, our chair, his worship is right. This is the way we're supposed to do things. But so far, I have a very brilliant team. One of these days, you should pass through and see how the youth of council are best. Yeah, I think I have, I might say I have the best team of councillors in the, in the country. Because the way they articulate issues, even the provincial government, obviously, when he came here, was impressed. I have a team that is very good.
Rain season has come. I think it rained some two days ago here in Chama. And farmers are waiting to get fertilizer under the physip. How has been the distribution eh, so far, from the time you, you came into office? And how are you working with the Ministry of Agriculture to ensure that your people benefit and get fertilizer on time in Chama?
Eh, like I mentioned, my brother, at first to say, sometimes, there are always people who want to make sure they fit things, they get things for themselves. They want, and this asks. But we put our foot down and said, we want everyone to benefit, those who qualify. We don't want to hear stories of saying, no, this one, because of A, he can't benefit, because of C, he can't benefit. We want those who qualify to benefit. Because they are, they are Zambians. They're from Chama district. So for me, I can't say eh, much, but so far, so good. I think for the past, for the first two years, we drained a bit, but right now, we are on top of things. Eh, our people, I don't think they are not complaining much. But the only complaint that they are, they are bringing to our offices is eh, they want the numbers to increase, the packs. Because the population has increased in the district, so they want the packs to increase, of which we have communicated to relevant officers, and we expect a response from our speedios out there. But so far, so good. I have no issues with the Ministry of Agriculture. We are working okay. And everything we communicate. If there are issues for me, my brother, I believe in transparent. If I observed something, I tell them, you can't do this. Why are you doing this? Normally, they are removing someone, they care, why are you removing this person? Tell me the reason. He's a Zambian. He qualifies. Why removing this person? So far, I think eh, that's what I can say. Farming says, of course, lands have come, vla yar. Eh, federize, ina kelefik, ina kelewela fik. I'm sure very soon, our people start receiving their farming imports. Then, of course, yeah, the first eh, the, the one for gardens, they received. Now they are waiting for physip to receive. Yeah, so far, so good. We are working okay.
Lundazi, Lundazi Chama Road, there is one bridge that was washed away last rain season. That's Luunzi Bridge. And up to now, there is still a diversion that was made by road development agency. How comfortable are you with that particular crossing point? And what efforts are you making to ensure that the, our DA works on that point before the onset of the rains?
I think we eh, eh, we are communicating with the regional manager. And then he is also making follow-ups at national level. Eh, they promised us that soon eh, they will work on that. Money, I'm sure, has been received in the ploughings, so we expect soon our DA to work on that crossing point. Our duty is to communicate. When we communicate with the relevant authorities, we expect a response. If they're not responding, we have done our job. We have communicated. We communicate every day. We make follow-ups because these officers are busy. So we are making follow-ups even now. Yesterday, I was even making a phone call. I was even reminding the minister, the provincial minister, that, son, you've seen the bridge, because he came through the same road. So he assured us to say, don't worry, that bridge will be worked on. But not only that, we are asking, we are still robbing from government. But if this road can be tarred from Lundazi, Canary Box One to Chama, from Chama to Matung, meaning Chama will be eh, a bigger town than, than, than Chasif. I don't want my sister to attack me, to attack my sister, Chasif One, but I know, Chama, Chama, Chasif, Lundazi will benefit from that connection. So we are asking that the government can connect the district. Otherwise, during the end season, we go through a lot. And that's why almost, a lot of roughs start when they come here, they refuse, working here because of the roads. End season is bad. I think I'll invite you end season. You'll see what we go through. Yeah, I think so far eh, we are pushing, hoping the government will do that. We saw an advert in the newspaper for PPP. We, we, we hope that will work out. But if it don't work out, we are asking government that they should consider putting funds for us here. We are Zambians like any other district. We also want to be connected. Want our people to be moving their farm produce easier, taking them to Lundazi, if they find market in Lundazi. If they find market in Shpata, they take it, but it's difficult currently on this, on this road. You moved on this road, you saw how bad it is. So we expect eh, the government to come on board and help us.
Your concluding remarks as we come to the end of this NCHZ program.
Eh, Vantwa Chama eh, esanashua us. They've seen our works that we are doing. Eh, I'm sure they have trust in us. Because whatever they've requested, we have done. So, kana shikomese yomaesi, as your council chair, kana shikomese yomaeni na ma councila binoos. Because it's chotukum, tukumba, kustuku kwa sebeze. The other issue, before I say my concluding remarks, I think it's good to elect a youth leader. Because a youth leader who work hard today, because he's still young, tomorrow he still need that position. So I urge the people of Chama to continue electing youths, even in more position, want to see more youths being elected in this position. As for me, my brother, I'll be very happy if I see you. I'm seeing a number of youths now coming, wanting to compete on my position, which is making me very happy. To say, okay, this is good. Previously, they were not coming. Because they felt maybe this one, this position is just for big people. But we opened the way for them to say, guys, you can do it. So I'm expecting more. I'll be very happy to see a fellow youth taking over from me. Meaning the future is eh, I mean, meaning the district is in their hands. Because we are not the future leaders. We are the great future leaders, and we are the leaders of today. And not that we are future leaders, no. We are leaders of today and the great leaders of tomorrow. Because currently, we are learning leadership, and tomorrow will be great leaders because we have learned leadership at the end night. The people of Chama, thank you very much for giving me opportunity. I think I've done my best. I'll leave it to the people of Chama to, to choose when the time comes. Currently, let them have faith in us. She krope hero. Whatever they want, will do it. Working as a team, not myself alone. Working as a team, will do it like we have done before. This, the many months for this year, next year, and you, twenty-two-six, will deliver for them and make sure, be the great leader that they expect me to be. And definitely, I want to make sure that I open a path for my fellow youths. I want to do the best for this district, so that the people of Chama can say, wow, the youth can do it also. We want to see more youths in leadership. We want to see more youths in this leadership. Currently, I always tell my councillors, guys, we are youths. If we do bad things, we are stopping our flames from being elected to these positions. Meaning if I do a bad thing, they will say, ah, mano dogo namo seberawa. But if I do a good thing, they will say, ah, youths, ah, you saw that the way gift worked at that council. But youths are very powerful. Can we have a youth eh, at this position? So that's why I am working tirelessly to make sure I open doors for my fellow youths out there in Chama district. So they can be elected in these positions. We want to see eh, more youths in the, in the district. The people of Chama, I'll never let you down. I'll be there for you. I'll speak for you. Like you, I promised you when I was campaigning twenty-one. And definitely, I will not fear anything. Because in Akola Bible, what chair, oni na buti, nesewingivand, mama Chama. So for me, I'll speak for them. Otherwise, thank you very much, Edward, for coming through. Chama is a beautiful town, one of the cleanest towns in the ploughings at national level. Chama can be number one, number two at national level. You've seen the beautiful town, very clean. So for us, it's our duty to make sure the district is mainly clean. And eh, it's the only ploughings that has two land, I mean, the only district in the ploughings that has two beautiful lands about. I always boast about this.
Thank you so much for according us the time to have you on our NCHZ program. We'll have another chat like this one any other day that you are called as such opportunity. Our dear viewers, thank you so much for staying with us for the past one hour and some minutes. We've been discussing with Mr. Gift Kumwenda, who is Chama Town Council Chairperson eh, here in Eastern Province. We've spoken about a number of issues affecting Chama district and also the nation at large. I have, I, I, I've been your presenter, Bandar Edward, for the past one hour. For those watching us on our Facebook page, Stephen Comer has made it possible for you to have that clear and clean video and audio, both on Facebook, on YouTube, and many other streaming platforms for our radio. Those getting us on Canary ninety-seven point seven FM, John Zaya Wan Zeteka has been behind the sound that you've been taking eh, for the past one hour. Thank you so much for making that big switch to Canary ninety-seven point seven FM and follow this, yeah, evenings, NCHZ program, as we were chatting with Chama Town Council Chairperson. Until next time, for now, it's bye-bye.